She put it in handy last month. We didn't have audio.
George, you're a very job. Someone has told me the glass blocks now, there are very few places waiting anymore than the US, and they may be very rare now.
Just keep what you need, and then I have to actually.
Oh, okay, no, so to a number, what?
I just, if you just take what you want and then move so I can make packets for them.
No, that's, no, 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 I'm out of your way.
That's not really bigger.
Okay.
Thank you. That's been super nice. It was a little less.
Want some sparkling water?
No, I'm good, I have some, thank you.
I just realized what, Jen, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Natalie sent it to me yesterday.
Yeah, we had, this one too is sort of, it's not so much of a story, but I'm quite worried about that.
Yeah.
And they didn't make them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll also do, yeah.
That's always hard to tell.
Yeah.
So that's, we'll meet that.
I'm excited, it's gonna be a very nice one.
Yeah, we're gonna send it out in our newsletter, but I'm also gonna do some targeted follow-ups.
Okay.
And I sent it to my board just minutes ago.
Oh.
And, like, I'll really push them.
Thank you so much.
Because they showed up. Yeah, anyway, make sure.
It's, tell them.
It was pretty good. Yeah, and then I was full of presents and things.
So we go ready for Christmas.
I think animals can only say it's sexy.
Yeah.
Or, or, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, two dogs, two teenagers, and two dogs.
So many dogs.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, um, then, you know, spent two days cleaning the house and two more days.
Two days after.
Hey, no!
Oh, you're good.
You might have to look at, but all the devicuents.
Me, strongly!
Yeah, we're just supposed to be speaking.
Yeah.
Oh.
I think it was like extended dinner, we're good, we're good.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's very cool. The topic.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I promise. It wasn't me.
It's not quite the license and, uh, I was getting that one. It's like, I'm late to lunch. Everyone's always, so I'm gonna, I'm just leaving this down.
We've been tired.
Twenty years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, also, um, yes.
And so, I also, I'm just not forget now.
Now, it's good.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, my God, we're all, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, and, uh, didn't like, um, so, uh, yeah, we're gonna do special tracks and stuff when I sell it again.
Oh, good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
You on the trip?
Yeah, I did, I did, thanks for asking.
Uh, yeah. Uh, probably a little close here, but, uh, do you want us to email maybe tomorrow?
Yeah, please, please.
I feel like the holidays probably won't hold things up, I think they will be, uh, uh, so, let's reinvigorate the conversation.
That's what we do.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, we went, uh, trying to get him, uh, the house, um, yeah, for rocking and serving. Um, so, and he's on the war, so we wanted to, so it's much more, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and it's in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Right, I, basically, like, I assume you're, uh, we're, uh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
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 Tonight, yeah.
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 Well, you don't look like Mary.
Happy New Year.
Hello.
Happy New Year.
Yeah.
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 I have to start it.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I do.
Yeah.
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 So, Bridgette, should I be handing off any treasure ship, just hand it directly to Jaeger?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So, but, you're not officially off yet, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good. Okay, let's sit here.
Yeah.
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 Jaeger.
No, 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 I'll, I'll sort it, it's too messy.
And, um, there's a master.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, you can see, like, fingered out.
So, is that for these?
And, uh, that's for you, that's all for you.
Yay!
Yay! Um, how is that, I just have it? What is it, man?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this is actually gonna be...
Pardon me?
This is...
The stack of paper.
Gonna be a little bit modified, because it's printed earlier.
Right.
A little bigger.
Yeah.
So, I'll just...
How's part is up to you?
Snail mail piece.
Oh, my gosh, look at the key pencil fingers! Is that on purpose?
Yep.
Oh, man, it's moving on.
Uh, box. Two, one, oh, oh, nine.
Let me write that.
Two, one, oh, oh, nine. It's the very bottom of, of the first.
Yeah.
As you walk in the door. Okay, 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 now where's?
Pretty, 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 pretty.
Where's, where's, did we lose all of the stuff? Where's the agenda? Oh, there it is. Okay.
Is this where that folder?
Oh.
There.
Yeah. Oh, um, I did not spread out something.
I did, yeah.
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 Are we not doing the other recording device anymore?
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I wanna make sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, I don't know what's what, this is Jaeger's handiwork.
Thank you.
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 Yes.
Yes.
We'll leave a new packet.
It's a one per year.
Yeah. Share.
Never seen such a flood of paper on the table back there.
Well, it's, you're like...
Is that the one you were referring to?
Yes.
This one?
Yeah.
No, that's a different one, isn't it?
And you just passed down this one, the, uh, Florida Avenue.
Uh, yeah, those are all good.
Okay, all right, so I can sit the rest on the chair here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Or I can put these on, too, for everybody else. Or actually, I might keep going for myself.
Cool.
Thank you.
So, let me...
Okay, so we're gonna turn to the open now. Okay, okay. Welcome, welcome. Please take a seat. Save, save further discussions for after the meeting. Um, I'd like to call the January 2020 meeting of ANC 1C to order, and, uh, we have a couple of minor changes on the agenda tonight. Um, the, um, election of officers is going to take place at the top of the order. So, the first item that we have is, uh, election of the new chair for the coming year. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Amir for chair.
Is there second?
I will enthusiastic second, though.
Any, any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, move to a vote. All those in favor of Amir Irani as the new chair for ANC 1C, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? You're stuck.
Amen! Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for having us.
Guys, one C O one, yeah!
Some tribalism. Thank you, Chairographer. I'd like to move to, uh, elect the slate of officers, um, and committee assignments in front of you, Commissioners.
Second emotion.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
Is a bid representative required to be, uh, redone on this term, or this term, or is it...
Yeah, it should be, we should include that.
So, let's, uh, write that down. Bid Representative Jaeger, uh, I'd like to nominate you as a bid representative.
Could you ask a second?
Please. Okay. Um, so just to run through the executive committee list, Vice Chair, Commissioner Guthrie, Secretary Michaela Wright, Treasurer Jaeger Bowles, and then, uh, for the ABC and Public Safety Committee, um, it'll be Ted Guthrie, Commissioner Guthrie is Chair, myself and, uh, Commissioner Bowles as members, and for Planning, Zoning, and Transportation, it'll be myself as Chair, um, Commissioner Guthrie, and Commissioner Wright as members, and then for Public Services and the Environment Committee, it'll be Commissioner Bowles as Chair and Commissioner Dendi and Zatoli as members. So, uh...
I would, I would move that slate.
All right, thank you.
Dendi and, Dendi was third, Zatoli?
Uh, Zatoli.
Oh, okay.
Move forward.
Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Um, all those in favor, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? All right. Zero, zero. Moving on. To the, uh, Chair's report. Happy New Year, everyone. My first Chair's report, and I don't have anything to report.
Well, I, I have some leftover Christmas greetings that, that came to the Board, and it's from, I can't even pronounce it, L A R C H E, uh, which has four different, um, places around the district, and sent us a lovely Christmas greeting card. I think they got one of our, um, grants this year, similarly from the Platform of Hope. We got a Christmas greeting, and thank you for the, uh, funding that we provided for them this year, and similarly from Joseph's House. So, just to let you know that people do appreciate the work that we do, particularly if we give them money.
Thank you. Onto the Secretary's report.
So, for this, are we gonna include the minutes on the concern?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's part of the concern agenda now.
Then, I have nothing to report.
And on to the Treasurer's report.
So, as former Treasurer, can I do the Treasurer's report?
You're the one who knows.
Okay. And would Jaeger sign it as the new Treasurer?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, the only item I have, um, I want to, um, make a motion that we consider the 2020-Q1 reconciliation, um, it's not technically due for us, for consideration, till February, but because I did all of the finances and I prepared it, I was thinking it made more sense to do it now. Um, so, this is in front of you, um, for consideration, or, I guess first, uh, so I'd like to make a motion that we consider it, it was not on the, um, agenda.
Second.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, in case somebody say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, can't make a thing? Okay, um, so just a couple quick minutes on this, um, you can see we received two allotments from the DC government totaling just over $9,000 in Q1 of, um, 2020, so I think there was a catch-up payment for before, and then, or catch-up allotment, and then our standing allotment. Um, we spent $3,000 on grants, um, quite a bit on office supplies, that, um, increase was for the live streaming equipment, which is allowing us to be live right now, um, and then, uh, aside from that, just sort of standard printing and, um, payroll and taxes. Um, so, I'd like to make a motion that we accept or approve the, um, quarterly finance report for FY 2020.
Second.
Um, all those in favor, in case somebody say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any dismay? Okay, I will pass this to you, Commissioner. Uh, these are the items that I was thinking we might need to do in this, is, um, we're supposed to have a file, the location of our checkbook and finances, and that location has changed, so I think we need to pass a resolution approving the new location, I know, I'm sorry, of the, um, checkbook. At this meeting.
Okay.
So, I'd like to propose that we consider that.
We're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do that again next month as well, because...
Oh, for doing, yeah.
I'm moving.
Just do it next month.
Oh, okay.
Still on my side.
Just we're never gonna do it next month.
Yeah.
Um, aside from that, last month was pretty standard, we, um, did, uh, fund the Jubilee Jumpset grant, and we paid the first half of our installment to Gordon, um, for his service, his live streaming services throughout the year. That is all I have, as your former Treasurer.
Uh, thank you, former Treasurer, and thank you for being Treasurer. Um, so, moving on to Commissioner announcements, uh, I'll start on the right. Commissioner Zatoli?
Um, okay, so, I don't have, um, immediately any public announcements, um, I don't even have anything scheduled for Public Services and Environment Committee either, including any grants, we, we having a great cycle, I'll be doing, um, a calling of grants, I believe, next month.
We hope you can all join for summer, all of them. Mayor Bowser wants to continue her commitment to transparency and the goals of the administration with the release of the 2020 Accountability Report. Mayor Bowser releases a report every about six months that shows what progress and what promises the administration made and how close we are to getting them. That will be Monday, January 13th, 4:00 p.m. at the Kellogg Center at Gallaudet University, open to the public right back. Next week, on Friday, January 17th, from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m., there's an event, New Year, New Housing. It's a number in a series of events the city is doing to discuss how we're going to get to the 36,000 new units by 2025 mission. So that will be at the D.C. Housing Finance Agency, which is at the intersection, it's that big, realist building at the intersection of Flora and, is it 8th? Yes. That again, will be January 17th, 10:00 to 11:00, 11:30 a.m. Mayor Bowser also wants to invite everyone to walk with her in the MLK Parade, February, January 20th, 11:00 a.m. at the intersection of MLK Junior Avenue, Southeast and Goodall Road. There will, the Multicultural Resource Fair will be this weekend at the Columbia Hypothesis Campus. A lesson flyers in the back will be going from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. And there will be a number of resources, including health screenings and tailored integration Last thing was about Christmas trees, but I feel like we got that out of the way. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Oscar Montiel, and I'm here at the Council Number 3 in the Do's Office. I just, I've set some copies of 2019 published report right here in the back. There's more information on there about a telephone town hall that we will be having on Wednesday, January 15th, from 5:30 to 6:30. And also, I just want to announce a board one public safety discussion. It'll be a moderate panel discussion on public safety, and I've got copies of the flyers.
Thank you. Kristen?
Yeah, sure. A couple of things, or winter things. Chris, I hope you all enjoyed the decorations that we put up around the PRCs. That's kind of fun project, fun in terms of engineering challenge to figure out how to get the garland lights around the perimeter, but we just took that down on Monday. So, and then I'll look pretty well, so we'll do it again next year. And considering the investment we spent doing it, we want to make sure we, you know, put it up again next year. We're going to be doing a couple of things in the next couple of months. One of them is we're bringing back date nights, which was a promotion we did in February, March last year, and it was really popular, so we're going to roll that out again in early February, and it will run for the whole two months. So there's a whole bunch of different date packages that you can win. We just ask you for your email address, and it's nights at the Line Hotel, it's dinner at Midwood, and drinks at Bourbon, and it's a whole variety of stuff, and there's also some other dollar date ideas. It's a really fun promotion to get people engaged and all of us to offer it after work. And also, in line with the date nights, we're going to be doing a Valentine's Day decorating contest. So we're going to be asking businesses and owners to decorate for Valentine's Day, and have a contest and have some cash prizes. So that would be really fun, and we look forward to the community's involvement in that as well. We're also going to be doing a spring version of Porch Fest. We're calling it Porch Fest on Plug, and it'll probably be Saturday, May 2nd. It'll be a little smaller Porch Fest, but again, same kind of idea as the October event, but a little smaller scale, and again, mostly acoustic music. So we're beginning to put that together. A reminder about parking in the Colonial Garage. Colonial now enables customers to revert parking ahead of time. So if, you know, people are coming to the neighborhood and are saying, oh, there's no place to park, well, there is in the Colonial Garage. And during the day, you can get parking validated by the businesses, which people forget about. So, and if you go to a business that doesn't have the daytime parking validation, ask them to get it, because it's free. It's free to the business. The way it works is, you ask the business for a parking validation, you take the little card back to the garage, and you pay the same rate as you do at the parking meters in the garage for either two hours or four hours. And that's good seven days a week until 5:00 p.m. every day. So we're going to try to push out this information because a lot of people don't know. And this is a service that, this is a program that Colonial has done for years, so, and it's, you know, very important.
Kristen? Sorry. Is that also, is there a program for employees for Colonial parking as well?
No, no. It's just for, it's just for customers. Yeah, it's just to encourage people who are coming to the neighborhood, you know, to find a place to park for two hours or four hours. You have to, you're out by five.
Okay.
If you stay past five, we're regularly supplying.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's great. We also have a new video that we're going to be releasing really soon, and some short clips. That'll be on our website, and we'll also be, you know, promoting it on social media. And it's, we're really excited about that. It's got some kind of fun clips of different people that I think you'll recognize. And also, I know the ANC has been encouraging us to figure out how to participate in Art All Night, which is at the end of September. And I've been getting some hints of good news coming from DSLBD that they might open that up to other organizations. So we're hoping for some good news, and we'll be able to participate in Art All Night. I don't have a hundred percent yes yet, but we're hoping for some good news soon. So I wanted to make sure that you all heard that. Movie Nights, we're going to bring that back again this spring. We had a great partnership with the Smithsonian Air Space Museum this last time around, so we'll either be partnering with them or with another Smithsonian museum. And we've set those dates for May and June. The theme, we haven't quite firmed up yet, so we'll just assume that. And I think that's it. So if there's any questions, I'll answer them. Thanks.
That was a lot. Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah.
Nick?
Yeah. Rapid Neighbors Association, at the last BZT meeting, we presented our submissions for the office of planning for the complex, and included some copies in the back, and you wanted to be interested in what we put forward.
Please, Matt?
Good evening, Commissioner, Chair, excuse me, around earlier, we'll be at the BZT committee meeting in two weeks to discuss our forthcoming BZA submission regarding the second phase, which is really just in addition to the Adam Heights project in 777 Columbia Road. Looking forward to having a dialogue with many of you regarding, you know, access in the alley, as well as anything along Columbia Road that we can perhaps do to make improvements in that corridor. We're pleased that Rumpel's Hour got off to a great start. New Year's Eve, in fact, and Fort Power is opening this week. So, you know, a couple of great new spots for, you know, everyone in the community to enjoy. And on that note, I'd love to also have a separate dialogue regarding future retailers for the second phase of Adam Heights. One of the reasons why Fort Power was really excited to come here was because of some of the information and data that we collected early on a couple of years ago, and they're also really starting to promote everything about Adams Morgan as well, which I think is several years. So please feel free to, if you have any time.
Thanks, Matt. Other public announcements? All right, hearing none. Let's move on. So we have a consent agenda. Thank you, Jake, for that suggestion. There are a couple of things on the consent agenda that will not be there. That's B, because we already did it, and item G. So B being the adopting a slate of officers and committee assignments, and item G, a resolution to fill the vacancy in 1C08, because officially, right now, we can't do that. So we won't be doing that right now. So the rest of this stuff on the consent agenda, I'll just really quick run through them and pause for questions before we vote on it. The minutes is pretty straightforward. The $25 to participate in the security fund ensures us against misappropriation and negligent losses of funds, of the ANC funds. The signatories on the ANC 1C bank account will be a few officers, the chairperson, the vice chair, the treasurer, and the secretary. Adopting the ANC meeting dates, renting the space you're sitting in, and the resolution in support of the new expanded Life of Riley on 18th Street that will help them also serve the community as a vet. That is also in that stack of papers. Commissioner Guthrie, do you want to say a word about that?
Yeah, at the, at the last meeting, we were under a time crunch because the BZA was scheduled for the week following, and it didn't seem likely that the neighbors who had some concerns could get to an MOU understanding with the Life of Riley folks before that meeting, but it turned out that they managed to do a great job of getting it done. And so we reported to BZA that we had not taken a position that was consistent with the currently existing facts, because when we voted to disapprove the request, it was based on there not being an MOU in place. There now is an MOU that covers the concerns of the neighbors and looks like a good MOU to encourage, encourage the business and also allay the concerns of the neighbors. And we're happy to see them expanding, and the resolution is simply a resolution to send to BZA telling them that we now support it because there has been a change in the facts and there's an MOU.
Thank you, Commissioner Guthrie. So the consent agenda, there are six items listed that we're going to vote on. The consent agenda is not meant to house controversial items, so if there's anything that anyone here feels should be discussed or shouldn't be on the consent agenda, please speak up and let us know, and we'll take it off and we'll discuss it in public.
I have a quick question on G. Are we just waiting for the reservation?
It has to proceed through the Board of Elections, and they have to send something to us saying, you have a vacancy, and the timeframe, we can't do anything on the timeframe until we get that, so I assume that will be done next meeting.
Other questions about these non-controversial items, presumably non-controversial items? Hearing none, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Six, zero. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. First, at the top, we have a new CT license at 1807 Florida Avenue. It's mock meetings, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing that. I understand the applicant and their attorney are here?
Yes. Do you want us to come up?
Please do.
All right. Yeah. So is that my name?
Hi, my name is Steve O'Neal, I'm the mayor's house blocker, and I am here as counsel to the applicant. And you're with the owner slash landlord of the building. Can you introduce yourself, say your name?
I'm KJ Hughes. I'm living here with my wife Ashley Hughes. Yeah, we bought the building at 1807 Florida Avenue back in August, and we want to go somewhere inside.
No, it needs to be.
So this is, we did apply for a class CT license at 1807 Florida Avenue. I, we also applied for a couple of endorsements, one being this summer garden. We made an endorsement. I know this area has been, there is some concern, and we're happy to address any questions. We did apply for four hours, however, we do understand, even that we are close to residents, we are happy to talk to, and I already have, but happy to continue discussions with Commissioner.
Just to clarify, it's my understanding that the building will actually be physically separated into a Florida Avenue portion that will be the liquor license venue and a, what's the other avenue?
Vernon Street.
Vernon, a Vernon Street portion that will be physically separated from the other and will be devoted to retail as opposed to the licensed premises. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, accurate in that it'll be different, it'll be two different premises. So there'll be a retail establishment on 18, on the Vernon side, there is going to be a retail establishment there with an, I forget this time, just for going into detail on that. But in terms of the tavern, the tavern is going to be a speakeasy. It is, the entrance will be on Florida side, it is separate and apart from the retail establishment that will be on the other side. Additionally, and again, there's also, and we can, this is going to be the owner of this building, there's going to be a tenant that's going to, this is a tenant to keep living on the fourth floor. And so he has an interest as well in making sure that there is order required, and he wants to make sure this tenant stays there. So yes, that's, that's correct, and it's a different, completely different business.
Well, the reason I asked is because I'm planning to make a motion to protest just so that we can stay at the table to negotiate a settlement agreement, and one of the potential bases was a challenge on the basis of, this is a tavern license that would be issued within the moratorium zone, if in fact it was on Vernon, but as long as it's on Florida, that seems to me, looks to me, as though that's outside the moratorium zone, so that we could, you could have a tavern license there, and so that our, my motion will be directed toward peaceful and quiet rather than the moratorium issue. Just because-
Great, and I just add, and I don't know if you all know, assuming you do, but ABRA has conducted its own investigation into the issue, and we did have to submit documentation. We will have a certificate of occupancy, and see if one that does say Florida Avenue for the tavern.
Do you, it's, so I guess my question is, is there any, like, plan or concept you would be able to share with at least us? And I guess that's where, like, I would be interested in protesting until we can see, because I just-
Absolutely.
The holiday time happened, and it's like, I don't, I think either fell through the cracks, but I didn't have to see a plan for this, and I definitely am interested, and so pro, like, restaurants and entertainment, and that, I'm excited, but I definitely would like to know, like, what the concept is, the type of people they would be catering to, what type of services would be available, and like, all of the different endorsements. The only endorsements, or I guess the only thing that I've got was like, the list of endorsements from-
From the placard.
Yeah, from the placard, and it was all of them, which is a good starting point.
Under, no, I understand completely. The mine is a very small establishment, and we would apply, I think, maximum for the capacity to be 50. But to answer your question, yes, absolutely, I think that this is proper at this stage to show everybody, and things are being worked out. What we do have, we are having to commissioners-
Yeah.
-and go over the plans and discuss them, and get your concerns, and hopefully come up with some sort of settlement or something.
You had a question?
Yes.
You say this is going to be two separate establishments, one off of Vernon, one off of Florida. Will that be a formal lot line division of that single building? Or will there be a firewall built between the two? It's sort of hard to understand how a single building houses two different enterprises with very different sets of conditions around them.
We are working out in terms, I will say, we, there will be two certificates of occupancy, right? So the use is going to be different in terms of the interior and how, I mean, we still going through construction, but it will be separate, it is interesting to be separate regarding the tavern, and it will actually be upstairs, like, easy, and the hours of operation will likely be different as well. So I mean, it's going to be two different businesses.
Will they be interconnected to where there can be an access through Vernon Street? Two of that speaking?
There could be, however, we can't use that. We can't, it'll be just for the retail establishment, and that could be clarified, and put it into some sort of, actually, would you just said it would be upstairs?
I'm a resident of the building next door, and there are a number of bedrooms that look out right on that entrance on the ground floor, but also, would you be using those balconies? Because those balconies look bright and beautiful in the rooms.
Those balconies would be, those balconies are out of code, and it should have never been built in the first place. Those balconies should be moved in.
I don't have one. I was like, I want people to see, like, hanging out there, they're really picturesque.
Follow up, Bill. I actually had the same question, which is, it's upstairs, so that means there is no outdoor space for the tavern?
Well, there is enough, the outdoor space is, it's on the Florida Avenue.
But that's not upstairs.
It's still, it could be used, we can use that as a similar thing.
No, you're not answering the question. The outdoor space is on the Florida Avenue level.
Correct.
The next floor up.
Is the speaking.
Which is upstairs, which is, that's where the speaking, what do you do with the Florida Avenue level and the outside garbage space?
Well, again, keep in mind, I mean, he owns the building, and so at this point, things are still being, it's early, he wants the opportunity to be able to, flexibility to be able to use the summer garden area in some way. Understand, what we said, it is very close residential, you know, there's residents all around us, as understood. We will, we are willing to work with you all and try and figure out some things in terms of comfort levels, where you all are comfortable with what he's doing and vice versa, but it is, yes, the second floor and the summer garden is on Florida.
Now, the other question is, is the two uses are separate? Is trash collection separate? Where's the trash collection for the tavern? On Florida or on Vernon?
So I spoke with, excuse me, Kristen yesterday evening, and she provided, this was already in the plans, but we want daily trash pickup.
Right.
So we probably will contract to have our trash picked up daily. You know what I was going to-
That doesn't answer the question. Where will it be?
Oh, it'll be on the Florida side.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be on the Florida side. The building was always on the Florida side, even back in, you know, private rooms younger, there was a trash kind of area in the back of the building on the Florida side, that's where all the trash was, and they didn't produce much trash.
They, they used our trash a lot.
But the building was empty, the building had one tenant when I bought it, so-
X, Y, Z, the salon used our trash.
Oh, salon, yeah, that's where it was for quite a while.
Marcus? That would mean that you're going to put a trash area adjacent to the patio area, to the cafe restaurant? Because what I'm looking, I'm looking at the map and the facade of the building right now, and on the street level, there's what you would call maybe the potential for a sidewalk cafe, and that's the Florida side that you're saying the trash will be located on.
Well, currently, well, currently where the trash is located is on the side between, so there's four commercial buildings closer to the 18th Street corner. So the building, so that's 1807, and I would say, the building, if you're looking at the building that goes to the right-
Yeah.
-there's a small area there-
Okay.
-that's being used for trash pickup, trash collection. We're going to use that same exact area, but instead, our trash will be picked up daily equal nightly. So it would be sitting there overnight. We have, again, just to, you know, add a little bit more, I'm a third generation Washingtonian. I've been around Adams Morgan my entire life, my mom worked in a salon for 20 years on Connecticut Avenue. My grandmother was in there at San Elizabeth Hospital for 40 years. I know this area pretty well, I know this neighborhood very well, I know DC very well. So by purchasing a building, just to give you a, you know, a little bit more, I am inclined to, you know, I'm sitting in a seat kind of with you guys, right? So I'm not a renter, I'm not, you know, planning to be here five years and build a business and make money. You know, we bought this building for a reason, we want to provide options, you know, in this neighborhood for everybody. And so trash collection is really big, I don't want trash sitting outside. It's not good for customers, it's not good for tenants, it's not good for me as a, you know, homeowner. So in terms of noise, exactly the same thing, we're trying to have apartment on the fourth floor, we want tenants, we really want a tenant to be in there for years to come. So in terms of noise, we have, you know, a vested interest to make sure the noise is not an issue. So over buildings, we are to the point where we don't want any noise in the common area hallway on Vernon. So just to give you a little more.
Chair?
On the issue of sound control, both for the fourth floor tenant and for the neighbors nearby, I'm suggesting that the settlement agreement focus on prudent sound control measures to make sure they're in place.
Absolutely, agreed, noted, and also, we've had some experience, some negative experience of trash issues, even with daily pick up.
I read all the lucky bones.
Our last episode.
Well, first. People far above the building, I read.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Ross?
Mr. Trump, thank you. I want to go back to Commissioner Guthrie's original point about this division of the building. And Mr. Hughes, you started out this conversation by saying you bought 1807 Florida Avenue.
Yes.
You didn't buy 1807 Florida Avenue. Because that deed here, you bought 1806 Vernon Street. You signed two mortgages. Mortgages were for 1806 Vernon Street. There's a single structure on a single record lot, one square, one lot, a single structure on a single record lot in the District of Columbia for 1806 Vernon Street. United States Post Office wants to deliver to 1807 Vernon Street, which is basically the back door of the basement of 1806 Vernon Street. But you bought 1806 Vernon Street, and that's the only structure that the District of Columbia's records have as a record lot for this structure. And we have a moratorium in Adams Morgan that covers both sides of Vernon Street. Now, you know, you can put up a wall inside a structure, but you apply for demolition permit, and in the demolition permit application, the application says, give complete and legal district address. And in that application, either you or your permanent executor filled in 1806 Vernon Street northwest with the square and lot number. This is a single building on a single square and lot, and the complete and legal district address is 1806 Vernon Street. This building is in the moratorium zone.
It's not, and I'm not going to-
Excuse me, excuse, excuse me. If the chair wants to recognize you, the chair can recognize you, okay? Now, I don't know what the original plan for this building was, because back in, back in June, before this transaction was completed, Mr. Hughes applied for CFO, and I don't know who filled out paperwork, but somebody went down to DCRA, and on the application for the CFO, XYZ Salon before him filled out a piece of paper, and DCRA, 20 years ago, in its incompetent wisdom, accepted a piece of paper and application that filled in 1807 Vernon Street, and they put in the square and lot number, and they gave XYZ Salon a CFO for a salon.
For 1807 Vernon?
For 1807 Florida Avenue.
Okay.
And Mr. Hughes filled out another application in the name of another LLC, or somebody in mind is to have filled out another application, so CFO for 1807 Vernon Street, and they put in the square and lot number in the most incompetent agency in the- put in the square and lot number, and the most incompetent agency in the district government gave him a CFO for a salon and a barter shop. And now here we are today, looking at Mr. Hughes and his attorney with a demolition permit, where they said that full and legal district address is 1806 Vernon Street, coming in and asking for a tavern. This is a subterfuge. This building is in the moratorium zone, the full and legal district address for this building is in the moratorium zone, and we're operating here with a gentleman who comes in and says, "I bought 1807 Florida Avenue." No, he didn't. He paid 2.2-plus million dollars for a building at 1806 Vernon Street, he signed two mortgages at 1806 Vernon Street, and now he's telling us, "I bought 1807 Florida Avenue." I'm sorry, no you didn't. This building is in the moratorium zone.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Uh, would you care to respond to that?
No, I, I, I don't, um, I'm not going to have sort of a legal debate about this. Um, obviously, you can submit, or you can, you know, I can speak to you about it, I can give you the information that we gave Abra. Abra investigated it, and they, they already made the decision by placarding us that it's not within the moratorium, um, when it comes to.
Abra staff or Abra?
Abra.
Abra staff or the ABC?
The chair recognizes her.
It went to the board. So, I, I understand, I hear what you're saying, uh, we have, in terms of certificate of occupancy, what we need from DCRA is a CFO that's authorizing us, you can use what address you want, but the building, there's an entrance, you know, on Florida Avenue, we are able to get a different occupancy for that address, and if we take that from Abra, Abra is not going to, they can't second guess the agency, and what another agency has already submitted or, so that's where, that's where.
Understood, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would urge the, I would urge the, the commission to stand up for the moratorium zone, and to take the position that this address is a lot, this one record lot, is in the moratorium zone, and if we have to take that position before the ABC Board, that we force the ABC Board to reckon with that issue, and not allow an applicant to come in after the fact and use this kind of subterfuge to undermine the moratorium.
I have a point of order, what's the deadline?
The deadline is such that we have to protest, if at all, at tonight's meeting.
Okay, can, um, can we get this?
We can include, um, in the protest, um, as, as an alternative basis, uh, the, the standard one we use is peace order and quiet. Um, it will interfere with peace order and quiet of the neighborhood. We can include a second basis that would be that it is within the moratorium zone. During the course of, um, discussions and negotiation on a settlement agreement, we may or may not, as the ANC, come to a decision that we're comfortable saying that it is outside the moratorium zone, if it is in fact, um, not something that has an entrance on Vernon Street, even though the property that the premises are in abuts Vernon Street. Um, and that, you know, if we can get a reasonable agreement and an accommodation by them, it seems to me that, that it can be something that would, if it is really based on Florida, and you enter and leave on Florida Avenue, and that is pretty clearly not within the moratorium zone, then I, I think we may come to that decision as a full ANC, but we have to go through a process to get there. We can protest on that basis, and then go forward and do a settlement agreement despite that.
So, could I make a motion to protest on the first statement that it is, could disrupt peace and orderly?
Peace order and quiet on, uh, at 1807 Florida Avenue?
Especially because Abra's already determined that, it's not our job to determine that, right? That was already.
Well, we have to decide whether or not Abra did the right thing, and I think as part of our negotiating, from what I hear so far, I'm inclined to say that, yes, it is outside the moratorium zone, and they're allowed to do that with this property. This would be more like in a pleading thing, where you put in what your bases are, because you can't add to them later.
Oh, okay.
So you'd put it in now, that doesn't mean that you're going to go forward with a full protest hearing about that issue. Would be my analysis of it. So I would prefer to include.
Both.
To recognize the concerns of the community by putting in both at this point in time, and work through a settlement agreement, so that we can get something that is acceptable to the neighbors and works for, uh, the applicant.
So my issue with adding the second part is that, looking up the code, it's pretty plain to see the map, um, the moratorium zone, it, this address is not in that zone, it's directly across the street, and according to the moratorium zone laws, there's no, like, proximity of the moratorium zone that these people would still fall in it. So, and I believe that there was also, um, I mean, the ADC government agency did a determination, like, went through an extra step to determine that it wasn't in the moratorium zone.
We fairly.
So I understand.
So for us to.
One thing, Commissioner Holt, one second. There's a map, right, with this ring around it, and I know the map you're looking at, because I've looked at it myself, um, and I think it's clear, uh, in DCMR 304.2, that, uh, it says the Adams Morgan Moratorium Zone, uh, is more specifically described as beginning at 18th and Vernon and proceeding on both sides of all streets, unless otherwise noted. And given the conflict there, I also had a conversation with, uh, the Assistant General Counsel at Abra, and she confirmed that 1806 is in the moratorium zone, or 1807 Florida is not.
It's very unfortunate.
1806 Vernon is. Uh, so, um, having said that, I think it is prudent to, uh, move forward with the protest on both bases, peace order and quiet, and that it is in the moratorium zone. So, Mr. James, you've had your hand up for a while, please.
I've got a couple things, again, you know, the first part is directed to Seddon, but I wanna, if I might, I don't think you should try to say that it's a protest ground, that you don't think it's, that it is, it's possible that it's not a viable building, because it's actually 1806. It's, you need to write a letter, you know, authorize writing a letter questioning, you know, the decision that the board made, that it's one building that cross, you know, it doesn't have an alley behind it, the alley stops, public alley stops before, so it's a unique kind of situation there. So, you know, as Mr. Roth pointed out very clearly, there's only one address. 1807 is a fiction, you know, it just doesn't exist, and I've already researched it, it sounds like Mr. Roth did too. So, you know, I just think that you should protest on peace order and quiet, and if you want to put in the same resolution, and also, we believe that, you know, there's good reason to doubt that it is a, an acceptable location for a tavern, because its real address is inside the moratorium zone. So if I, now if I might ask Seddon.
Yes.
Is this a 405 application?
Yes.
So you don't have a CFO yet?
Well, well, there is a CFO, there's two CFOs, there's a CFO that exists currently, um, which we submitted to Abra for Florida Avenue, and so there's construction that's being done for, because of the use, and being able to use the tavern, so we have to submit the proper CFO before it's going to issue. And, but yes, there is currently a CFO.
But it's not for 50, right? It's not for 50 persons to be inside? It's for a hair salon, right?
Yes, it's for, yeah, it's a different use.
Okay, so a different use, and it's really not applicable then, correct? You're seeking more occupancy on the CFO, am I right?
More occupancy?
Well, did, did XYZ Salon have an occupancy?
The reason why I'm only mentioning it to say that that address is being used, or that was used for the CFO, um, for the salon, was Florida Avenue.
Very good.
But in terms of the occupancy, I, I don't know, I'm looking at it. What's your question? So if, if it isn't.
I think the question was clear, like, does a, does a XYZ Salon have an occupancy of 50, which is what you were hoping to, to get?
We have a different CFO, we have a totally different, we have to, construction of these people.
So you don't really have a CFO yet, it was issued to a different entity?
Which is why I said it's a four, yes, that's why I said it's a four.
So you don't have a CFO.
No, not the number.
So to get this, you know, you have to have a lease and a CFO to get an ABC, to be able to apply for an ABC license.
That's not correct.
If you own the building, I believe that you can apply for a license for that building, if you're going.
Well, we don't, we don't know what their arrangement is.
You're right in that you do need a CFO, you need a CFO for issuance, not to actually apply, they will, Abra won't issue you the license until the CFO recovers the address that you applied for.
Okay, but, so, thank you for all that, I wanna get to the first question that occurred to me.
Sure.
What the heck is a speakeasy? I happen to be familiar enough with the ABC law, that word is not mentioned, so.
So this is going to be, I mean, in terms of the conduct, do you wanna talk a little bit about conduct briefly?
Uh, sure. Speakeasy Bar hopped up through prohibition, and it was a, um, really, a room that was secret, where people came and enjoyed themselves with drinks. So, they operate here in the city, um, Speakey Hotel has one, there's probably 405 within the city. Specifically, what we wanna do is we wanna have a speakeasy bar on the first level that has an entrance, and that provides a place to get a nice cocktail for adults.
Could I, could I get some, one clarification? You're, you're saying first floor, but my understanding was that you were actually gonna be on the second floor, so I'm not, I'm not quite getting that.
I'm calling the basement the basement.
Oh, okay, so you, so there is a basement level on the Florida Avenue side, and then the main floor is the one that you'd be having the speakeasy in, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I'm Lauren Barton, I live directly across the street from 1806 Vernon Street, 113 Vernon Street, and I think we need to have a reality check here. I live in a row house, 1806 Vernon Street is a row house. It is not a building that has two separate components. It has a front entrance on Vernon Street and a back entrance on Florida Avenue. It is one building. It is four stories on Vernon Street. There's a basement, the basement entrance, and then three stories, and then four stories that continues through to the backside. You're telling us that there's going to be a garden on the street side on Florida, and a speakeasy on the main level on Florida, that there's going to be a tenant on the fourth floor, which is the third, the fourth level, which is the third floor, and that there'll be retail on Vernon Street. This doesn't add up. What's gonna be on the basement, Vernon to Florida side, is it gonna be two separate establishments? Is it gonna be one establishment? What's gonna be on the Vernon side, Florida side? The first floor, retail, which I'm assuming means there's no food or alcohol served there? Second floor, what's gonna be on the second floor?
No, second.
Or be all your thing.
Let's, let's be clear with these people right now. So the Vernon Street, if you're facing Vernon Street, we're a three-story building.
Four, is it fourth?
Based on DCRA, based on DCRA, on Vernon Street, it's a three-story building. If you are looking from the elevation of Florida Avenue, it's a four-story building. So, if we're looking on Vernon, you are the, uh, the neighbor across the street on Vernon, if we're talking about Vernon Street, you have a basement, and you have three stories above. The basement will be retail. The first story will be a speakeasy. The second story will be office space. The fourth story will be a two-bedroom, two-bath residential space.
So the speakeasy will be on Vernon's side on the first floor?
The speakeasy will be on the first floor.
And will be on Vernon's side as well?
You just said both sides.
Right.
Okay, um, all right, all right, all right. Uh, let's, I'd like to move, okay, I'd like to move to, uh, I'd like to move, uh, that we, um, protest the license.
Can I make, state the motion so that we.
Please, state the motion.
I, I would move that we protest the application for a new CT license for MAHK meetings, um, on the bases that it is contrary to the peace order and quiet of the community, and as a secondary basis that it, um, exists within the Adams Morgan Moratorium Zone, and therefore would be an excessive addition to the impact of alcohol licenses in the neighborhood.
Can I make a point, a question?
Please.
Do the, does the motion need to be worded in that extreme?
They, yes, they, they always are. That's, that statutory basis, we can't say, "They're nice people," that has nothing to do with what we're doing.
It's gonna get written up and then sent over to Abra.
And.
Like, the word excessive, does that need to be in there?
Excessive is part of the statutory criteria for moratorium zones. Excessive concentration, excessive concentration.
It exceeds, it exceeds the cap on CTs.
Right, right.
Well, we already have 16.
So.
In addition on the motion, I would add that any commissioner is authorized to appear on behalf of ANC 1C at any proceedings involving the protest.
Thank you, Commissioner Guthrie. Uh, this is a new face I've, uh, ever seen, please.
My, my name's Devin, and I just wanted to say, as a member of the community, I'm not affiliated with this afternoon at all, but it, it sounds like it'd be a great business, great addition to the community, I would hope that the board could, uh, help, uh, help it get opened as quickly as possible. Thank you.
We need a second on the motion.
A second, a second motion. Okay, uh, I'd like to, uh.
Can you second your motion?
I seconded, yeah. I'd like to, uh, move to a vote. All those in favor of the protest as described by Commissioner Guthrie, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any extensions? Two extensions?
Forty-six, two.
Um, I'd like to thank you guys for coming tonight. As you can see, there's a lot of concern, and I know we'll be in touch for many hours to hash this out.
Does it need somebody as a person authorized to?
We'll, we'll let you know who's gonna be the prime person. Uh, but let's do get going on this, since it's a new license, we have very strict time limits, and so we need to get going on it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, moving on to the second item on our regular agenda. Roofers Union has a request to modify their occupancy. I see that we have a rep. Please.
Um, this is Julia Ralston. Uh, I recognize many of you guys, I succeed as, I don't know, if you checked the data, I don't find that Joe Manager over at Roofers Union. Um, so we've been there six years, um, we are trying to get, I won't worry all of it, I'll talk to Ted a little bit, and to, uh, a couple of folks about it, Dennis as well, but, um, there's a big disconnect between DCRA and Abra when it comes down to various capacity restrictions, and, uh, Abra over the years has kind of taken different numbers to mean different things. Uh, basically, on our rooftop, we have wood per DCRA, a seating capacity of 50, um, somewhere along the way, Abra started taking that as their total capacity. We're not trying to change the seating capacity at all, we are trying to have our Abra license recognize that we have both a seating capacity of 50, as well as a total capacity of 100, which has been designated as such by DCRA and all of that fun stuff that we've gone through that last year. Been fun. But obviously, if anyone has any questions, I'd love to, to help, um, and we'd love to report on it, but, yeah.
Phil, as I discussed with you when you initially told me about it, um, Roofers Union is one of the bigger business enterprises along the corridor.
Yes.
Um, and its prior occupant was not a good member of the community. You guys have been a good member of the community, but we still like to have settlement agreements with everyone, so that when someone comes in as a newbie, they can't say, "Well, these guys don't have one, why do we need one?" Um, and. Um, and, my understanding is that you received a tentative settlement agreement proposal, a draft just today.
Yes.
Um, and that is somewhat pared down from what we frequently put in, because we know that you're good operators and have been good operators. Our real problem down the line, if we don't have a settlement agreement, in addition to dealing with new operators who want to operate without a settlement agreement, is that should, God forbid, something bad happen to the company, and you guys sell the license and the space, uh, we have to live with the new people you sell it to, regardless of whether they're as good and wonderful neighbors as you guys are. Um, and that's, one of the real concerns that I have, is that every single settlement agreement we have in Adams-Morgan includes a prohibition on pub crawls of any sort of description, because we had a horrendous history 10 years ago or so, when they didn't have prohibitions on pub controls in the settlement agreements, and it was just chaos on 18th Street, when some independent entity came in and organized a pub crawl to make some money and inflicted on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I actually thought, I thought Adams Morgan's going to have one around this settlement agreement situation, but we've been approached about pub crawls, and I said, "No, it's anyone doing it."
Yeah, and, and it, it really does, Adams-Morgan is not conducive to pub crawls for a number of different reasons, but the, the history of it was so ugly that we don't want to revisit that. Um, so, my concern is that, my understanding originally, was that what you were doing was, um, resolving a discrepancy that existed in, um, certificates of occupancy that had been issued by DCRA and, um, by ABRA, and that ABRA had previously allowed, it's, it's my understanding, on a prior settlement agreement, there were 75 total allowed on the roof deck, um, rather than 100.
So, I could be wrong, because that's obviously before us, my understanding from that is, let's go back to the, I don't know what, I'll see what name was, but, um, my understanding is that at that point in time, ABRA didn't have, because even when we started, you know, they were giving us a capacity that was equivalent to our seating capacity, and it wasn't that they were enforcing your total capacity. My understanding is that, and I'm happy to look at that space, anyone, and kind of show you, we're happy with the chairs, but my understanding is that they were being told that ABRA needed up to 75 seats up there, and that was the number that was being enforced, because you, the, they would come in and be like, "Okay, I count 75 chairs, you know, you're good, I count 80 chairs, you're in trouble," and, I could be wrong, I, I'm no expert on, on the resuspense, but, that was my understanding, is that they had 75, is that, I don't know, I mean, I've talked to people, it said there were over 100 people at times up there. I, I, I was never up there, I can't speak to them, but that's my understanding of what that 75 number is. And so we're actually asking, in that sense, in my, if my understanding is correct, we're actually asking for a lower number than that, because that's, I mentioned Dennis, as he was saying, he'd like to be more chairs up there, because that way, you know, you have less standing, you have more, or the, lots of space waiting for you, yeah.
Well, I guess my real concern, well, and, and my real concern about, my real concern about the space is that being open, it, it doesn't really have sound that bounces down on 18th.
Yeah.
But it does have sound that goes back into the Columbia Road neighborhood, um, that has a number of big apartment buildings back there, that, there are a number of people who are potentially going to be disturbed by noise that comes from the rooftop.
Yeah.
Um, and, it's just my sense that 100 people up there are going to create significantly more than 75 would. I'd be comfortable going with the 75 figure as total occupancy, with 50 seats allowed, um, but I, I have some concerns about just increasing it up to 100 without having any sort of settlement agreement that helps to protect the neighborhood.
Okay. And, and I will say that they, you know, we inherited this, but there is, the way that those walls are designed, they're, they're soundproof, there's some sort of soundproof material that was used in that wall. I know that I've gotten contact by members of the, the apartment building behind us because of noise concerns, but that was actually because of an AC unit, which turned out to be, or a neighbor downstairs' AC unit, it was, we just got two new ones, so it's glad it wasn't ours, because that would have been frustrating, but, um, that, I will say that, you know, six years, almost six, this February that we've been there, uh, that's the only certain noise complaint we've received, to my knowledge, was that an AC was, was keeping them up, it's one day, other day, it was open this summer. But, yes, sorry, I'm...
No, no, that's fine.
Can I add a point of information?
Please.
From, you know, I had a similar conversation with Dave Delaplan back there, as Ted did, um, and, they were cited for having 75, but there are 75 seats, you know, up there, there's room for them, around the bar, along the railing, and then lower tables. So, you know, a past settlement agreement approved by these, by the ABC Board, had 75 seats up there for the reef. Still the same space, so, I mean, it seems a shame for them to go through this whole process of, you know, a substantial change, and pay a lawyer, and all the rest of it, and not get the occupancy which was at a previous establishment. You know, so, that's, one thing that having a new settlement agreement could accomplish, and I take your point about the noise, you know, there might be protections built into this settlement agreement, saying it can't be heard, noise cannot be heard in a residential unit.
And I, just to, to sort of echo that, but, but to my, the 75, the only reason why, I mean, it'd be great if we do, uh, civilizing, something like that, we go to a settlement agreement, all that, putting 75 on there, I think makes sense, I don't think that it makes sense for us to apply with ABRA at this point to make it 75 or 750, mainly because I think we have to go through DCRA again, and, again, the disconnect that we've experienced so far.
But you, but you have a, a CFO from DCRA that allows you 100 people as the total.
Yeah, 50 seats, 100.
And DCRA also has a number for seated capacity up there, or not?
Yes, yeah, 50 seats, 100, that's what they give us.
Oh, okay, okay.
We could write a settlement agreement, which, this language is not included in the draft that was exchanged today, but, it could give a little escape out, like, upon issuance of a COO from DCRA, the, you know, the seated occupancy on the deck could be 75, and then they just have to go get that, so it's okay with ABRA, you know, because it's not uncommon for a settlement agreement to exceed different aspects of a request to get to a settlement, you know? It does happen that way.
But, ABC can authorize anything more than DCRA has authorized.
Yeah, 75, we won't be able to get 75 unless DCRA, I think he's just saying, basically, you guys would not be approved, like, go ahead and pre, pre-approve it up to 75, assuming that DCRA, contingent on DCRA 75. But honestly, that's not, is, we're more concerned about, you know, we, we have a couple weddings and stuff this, this summer, that we, because originally we thought we'd get out to 100 up there, and so now that they're telling us otherwise, we're just trying to, like, rewrite, we want to make sure that when we have weddings up there, we have up to 100. We probably will operate still in that 75 to 80 number typically, just because that's a comfortable number, it's better for one bartender to manage it, all that fun stuff. Um, it creates some capacity up there, so people want to be on the second floor, just thanks to the vibe in the restaurant, or whoever else. Um, so our mindset with it is really just, you know, for the weddings and stuff that we have, want to be able to have the number that we, you know, that we told the guests that we could have up to 100, um, stuff like that, you know, it's, yeah.
So, would, I know you can't speak on behalf of ownership as to whether or not to approve the particular terms of the settlement agreement, but is it, is it your feeling that if we were to protest this tonight, simply to stay at the table to deal with the issue of settlement agreement, that we could work something out within the next month to be able to authorize the settlement agreement in February?
I think so, I'd have to talk with them, you know, the one that I went over, Dennis, you know, made sense for a couple points of, like, for one thing, the cover charge element.
Right, and cover charges...
There's a cover charge, but legally, we have it up the first year because we're doing a ticket in New Year's event, and they called it a cover charge, even though it's what you can eat, what you can drink, those are qualified as a cover charge, but, are still, send us and find us for that. Um, so we added the stipulation in year one of they can legally have a cover charge. So, if we're doing a wine dinner, beer dinner, stuff like that, just to, you know, we don't want to say that we're not going to do that, and then have that issue pop up down the road.
We're not charging five bucks at the door.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Which is what I would name a cover charge, it's not a prepaid advance.
So, with, with that, what I would like to do is, I would like to make a motion that we protest, um, the application for substantial change, um, on the basis of peace order and quiet in the neighborhood, and that any commissioner is authorized to appear on behalf of ANC 1C at any, um, proceeding involving that protest.
Second.
Could I add a point of information to...
Is that, would it be helpful to the decision on whether or not to protest?
I think it might be. The, you could, you don't have to send a letter in right away, on the good chance that we'll come to an agreement fairly quick.
That's a good point, yes.
You know, it's a little less...
Right.
...severe.
Right.
Yeah, because I, I, see, I think this is one of those, there were a number of them that were, um, coming due immediately before our next meeting, so that we have to protest if at all tonight, but, um, the date for receiving notice of protest by ABRA is February 2nd or 3rd, something like that, so...
How long is that, because the blockers only went up at the very end of the summer, so if it's 60 days, then it might be the years from 45.
45, yeah.
And when's the next meeting?
It's, it's February 6th, and, you know, it, it comes up like the 2nd or 3rd, you're...
Okay, if you're, I thought, um, I thought today, I thought we could have gone to either, it was my understanding from the lawyer, but I could be wrong, and then, um, this is trying to explain this, but, okay.
Can we add an exclusionary clause? That's essentially like, if, um, we won't protest unless there's a settlement agreement to come with our C and A.
But we can't get a decision, a settlement before the next hearing is the problem.
That you could approve it at your next meeting if you...
If we've, if, if they've agreed to it, we could hold off to approve it at the next meeting, and, um, um, secretarial support being such...
I think you know it's a real thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and just for my attention, the, because they were talking about stipulated, so that would be something we could also want to come to an agreement and move forward on.
The stipulated wouldn't be a problem, because the period of protest has already expired.
So you don't need a stipulation?
So you don't need a stipulate. Because that's going, going to expire before the meeting at which we can authorize the settlement agreement.
Okay.
But, we can get to a settlement agreement before that time, so that we can inform our secretary that he doesn't need to send in the paperwork to ABRA.
Okay, so, um...
So we need a vote.
Uh, let's move to a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, uh, as described, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? All right, that's 6-0.
And I have another matter that's on ABC that I would like to add to the agenda that was not consummated until, uh, so late that we couldn't get it on the agenda, um, and that is, we have come to a negotiated agreement with Los Cuates to, um, they were interested in having an entertainment endorsement, and we met with them and had a little back and forth about it, and came to an agreement that the applicant has signed, and so I would like to add it to the agenda for consideration and approval by, um, the commission at this meeting.
I'll second.
So, we can have a discussion to vote on the preliminary motion.
All right, uh, any discussion about adding this to the agenda? Uh, let's vote, uh, really quick to add this to the agenda, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions, it's now on the agenda, um, so...
And basically, basically, the settlement agreement is consistent with a lot of the recent ones that we put in. It only allows for live entertainment, um, the idea is to encourage Adams-Morgan establishments, particularly ones that have an ethnic focus, uh, to have, uh, music or other sorts of entertainment that are consistent with that, to help spark the idea of Adams-Morgan being an arts community, as opposed to having DJs that operate until the close of business and are focused on bump and grind. Um, at any rate, we've got, um, the settlement agreement that has been posted to the website, and that I have the signature from, um, the owner of, um, Los Cuates, and I would move that we approve the settlement agreement, that's as negotiated.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Um, hearing none, I'd like to move to a vote, all those in favor of the approving the settlement agreement, uh, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Nothing. 6-0.
And what is 2-0?
I'm sorry?
8.
Okay, uh, and that concludes ABC and Public Safety Committee business, uh, moving on to PZT. Is there someone to speak about the solar installation at 1838 Wyoming?
I...
I saw that.
I was so hard.
That looks like there was a problem between the solar people and the people who it's going to be installed, because we were very clear with the guy it was going to be installed on to come to this meeting.
Right, but Michaela and I both followed up two days after the PZT meeting with Next Steps, the date of meeting, all information, and I've just gotten some harassing emails back.
So, is it, is there something on the HPRB agenda?
I'm, I'm not familiar.
What were they asking for?
Well, they were... It came out today, but I didn't get a chance to examine it.
They were, um, putting in a solar array, because it's in a historic district, the issue is whether or not it would be detrimental to sort of the look of the street, basically, it's not going to be particularly visible, even though you can see it from, as you're walking up Wyoming, you can see it, but it's pretty minimal, that, at least according to what they showed us at the committee meeting. Um, I guess...
And I guess they've gotten, um, they hadn't reached out to neighbors, so we encouraged them to reach out to neighbors. We also encouraged them to reach out to, um, HPRB to understand what their thoughts in initial feedback was, um, and that's, that's all we got.
So it seems to me that we take no action and just get ahold of Ann and say, "They didn't show up for the meeting, and we need to have them show up, so take them out the docket if they're on it."
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I spoke to the owner of 1838, and she said in a text to me that she was asking them, uh, uh, solar to, to, for, asking for postponement for this meeting, and I just came to see if they actually showed up to do that, because she was having concerns about them, so, they're not here, and I'm going to relay that to her, so...
That's very helpful, and it's just table at the next meeting and move on.
So, uh, we need to vote to table that.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, table that, the request for Edge Energy Solar Installation at 1838 Wyoming Avenue, to, uh, do an assembly of PZT, or we're seeing them.
I sent her the date of the PZT meeting, so hopefully they'll come to that.
Oh, that would be helpful, okay, great.
We'll table it to the next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay.
Are you supposed to date it on January 4th?
January 22nd, 7:30, or 7, 7.
7.
Don't come at 7:30.
And it is over at, uh, Marie Reed Rec Center, down in the basement there.
So, point of, um, procedure, like, I don't think you can table something that would require a vote of the full commission to, to the committee, because the full committee...
It's tabled to the full commission, that's all.
It's, it's tabled, it will be addressed by the committee at the subsequent committee hearing, they're not going to be able to...
Something different from there, and then, I think you said, the committee date.
The committee didn't have enough information when we last met, right, you were there, so you remember, so, um, we had said we were going to take it to the full ANC in January, but without the recommendation, they didn't show up, I've given them the dates for February ANC meeting, as well as the January 22nd PZT meeting, we just need more information, so...
Okay, so, um, let's take a vote on that table, um, all those in favor of tabling the... All those in favor of tabling the request at 1838 Wyoming Ave, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Six, two, zero, table. Okay, moving on to the next item. A resolution requesting a traffic study by DDOT, and to consider community feedback at the infamous, did I say that? I meant at 18th and Florida Ave. I wasn't here when that resolution was presented, and I wasn't at the committee meeting. Who did present that resolution?
I did.
Yeah, Jayber, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so at that PZT meeting, we were very rushed for time, so we, this resolution came out of committee with no recommendation. Essentially, as many, as many of you all know, the intersection of 18th Street, U Street, and Florida Avenue had some serious and dangerous activity revolving motor vehicles and people walking, and I think it would be great, I've had multiple requests from residents, and have experienced it myself, that there needs to be some attention from the Department of Transportation in looking at either just, well, I have quite the bit of recommendations, but a lot of it, nothing is construction based, so changing the flow of traffic, nothing's going to change there, or we're not suggesting anything changed there, we're not suggesting, again, any construction that was done in 2012, so it's still relatively new in the whole building and transportation world. So, we did, we did see a lot of observations, and if you had a chance to grab a map here, there's some color coding. Essentially, looking at the traffic flow and the traffic patterns, some of the high-rate or the most glaring observations was there was a lot of vehicles that turned right on red and no right on red signs. There were buses, vehicles, pedestrians that often failed to yield to the yellow sign, the yellow left turning angle, heading south, or error, I'm sorry, heading south on 18th Street, so that often caused a lot of congestion. So, quite a few of the suggestions relate to just relocating signs, reconfiguring, light timing, possibly adding bus priority, which would allow the 90, the 96, and the S3 to essentially get through that intersection without blocking it. That would definitely help with traffic flow. There's a few of those all throughout the district already. Adding a crosswalk across 18th Street, so there is a multiple pedestrians that were using that pedestrian island and essentially were walking across 18th Street, parallel to Florida, so suggesting there be, being something there. Repainting guidance markings and cyclist markings. If you look at the 2012 pictures on Google Map, you'll see that there's like actual like turning guidance. There's also guidance from the westbound Florida and westbound U Street, as well as eastbound Florida. So, there, in all situations, there's one lane that splits into two lanes. In 2012, there were lane markings that indicated that as such, so since there's been a lot of wear and tear and remarkings, those markings have gone away. So, just simply adding those would definitely be of help. I would also suggest adding do not block the box signage, which could also be enhanced by actually creating a box. There's some of those throughout the district already. It's essentially just a green painting, and it's, makes it like there's a pedestrian zone, where vehicles know where exactly the intersection ends and where it begins, because it's a black or pavement on the one side and green on the other side. So, just making things most visible for all parties, pedestrians, cyclists, scooter users, as well as vehicle, as people who own vehicles. Something that was also noticed that is a very large problem is on the south, the south side of Florida Avenue, in front of the Corin Cafe and Restaurant and the Ace Cash Express, there is a constant parking, illegal parking there. So, working with those businesses, as well as the single-member district beneath us, which is into B, who's also a part of this process, go up identify customer parking for those folk, which we have identified as being further up on U Street and or behind in the alleyway as possible opportunities. Another big, let's see.
How did this come out of committee?
Without, without a recommendation, because we were so pressed for time.
Yeah, we went through this one and the next one in like two minutes. I read a lot of the observations and a lot of suggestions. It is a lot, it is a lot, a lot. I sent this through the Department of Transportation's liaison to see like, hey, is this a format that you're gonna be okay with? And I got a very positive feedback. They liked the map, they liked all the directions, they liked the observations, the suggestions. They would suggest that we file a service request number using 311, like everyone else does, adding that to the resolution, so they can, we can upload all of that information to their system, and to also do.
What would that 311 request be? You mean for a bunch of the items here?
No, just do one 311 request for the traffic study. So, for anyone who's interested, anyone can do this traffic study, or request that there be a traffic study at any intersection. I just thought it would be great for us to go through this process, because we do want major changes. There are opportunities of incidents in this intersection, a lot of them. So, the, what was your follow-up question?
Uh, you answered about 311 request.
Yeah, so, add that, and then they will be doing a walkthrough, like that's to just be like, oh, that's what you mean there, that's what you mean there. And then, hopefully, we can get some things changed by the summertime.
After the 311 request, they will do a walkthrough?
Yeah.
So, we now have an opportunity to make that, the date and time of the walkthrough public, so anyone can join, or is it something that commissioners?
I mean, I'm, I'm always open to that type of stuff.
Did DDOT specify?
They didn't specify, but I don't see why not, it probably could be branched.
So, my real concern about this is I haven't had the opportunity to really work through all of the recommendations, and I don't feel comfortable voting in favor of the recommendations at this point. If we can start the process by simply voting to authorize a request for a traffic study that would include a 311 request, if that would like get the ball rolling, because it seems to me that you're also suggesting that DDOT would have feedback during the walk that would help us be better informed as to what we're requesting.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I put in a lot of time and effort into this, so I would rather get this thing passed. I was, it was not just observations, so all of that might have those. I don't think that any of these suggestions are too, I mean, it's like, I don't think that these suggestions are too crazy, and I would like to put the emphasis on time. I would like, I would like this, I would like this to get started.
Well, my concern about time is that I just, and, and in October of 2018. We make specific recommendations about changes to this intersection without having had, I don't feel I had enough time to really consider the particular ones to be able to address them, and I don't think we've had any input from the public about them, and if we're going to make recommendations, I certainly want to have input from the public.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Bowles has done a really wonderful job of laying this out as suggestions, and not, and very specifically not recommendations. So, there are suggestions. I also, in terms of community engagement, Commissioner Bowles invited members of the community, as well as all of the commissioners, to come down when the observation was happening. I stood out there for a while with him. The other piece, just, and I mean this just to be fair, is we wrapped up the discussion, that was our time for discussion, we wrapped up the discussion, everybody had a copy of this, that was two weeks ago, and the idea was that we would all have time to process it. So, I, I want to pass and support this today, because there has been so much time and energy, and nobody's saying this has to happen, it's saying, here's some suggestions based on what we observed, and there was a lot of community input that went into this.
Okay, well, that's helpful to know.
I also want to thank you for all your work you put into it, and you too, because I think without suggestions, it looks like we're looking to DDOT to make all the decisions for us without having at least any point, you know, for them to start from. So, I think it is good, even though they are just suggestions, to have these as topics of discussion, so that we remember to come back to them.
Yes, and I will make a friendly amendment to the page one, actually does say recommendations, so I would like to change that to suggestions.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, in terms of like community input, I don't quite know if this doesn't meet the community input. Back far, none of the previous resolutions that we've passed have, because this has been all over Twitter, we've done numerous walkthroughs. It didn't go through committee, I agree, and I don't think.
Well, and I, I didn't hear that you had had that substantial, my, when you said we, I thought you meant you and Bridget had, had sat there and made the observations.
Former Chair Rob joined us for a bit.
Um, and this is also in conjunction with 2B, so they will be passing, I believe it's on their agenda today as well.
Resolution?
Um, one, requesting a traffic study, and from what I believe Beverly is using the same, except switching 1B to 2C, just, I mean, still including us, but.
So, because I'm having trouble finding things, is there a recommendation about parking in front of the, yeah, suggestions? Parking north of Florida on 18th?
I added that in after our conversation at PZT.
To take, to take out at least four spots there?
Um, so there's.
By the jury?
Yes.
So, that is in conju, yes, that is conjunction with our other plan that we'll be working with. That isn't in this, because if that specific spot is going, is in conjunction with our pickup drop-off project with 18th Street. So, that specific strip is already in the works.
DDOT is addressing that separately?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm stunned. Already in the works and never discussed publicly.
Yeah, that's all, right?
Plan that will be presented to the public for, for.
Yeah, um, so this is a public request that anyone can make, but there, yeah, we have been having conversations with agencies on how we can make 18th Street more safe, and I don't think it's wise for them to come out and honestly get counted by people who aren't familiar with it. So, yeah, we do, we are the elected body of this neighborhood, so yeah, we are being consulted on what they would like to change.
Who's they, they would like to change? Who's they?
The neighborhood, people who have made these requests, DDOT, I don't.
Okay, so back to the resolution at hand, is there any discussion amongst commissioners? Members of the public? Mr. James?
Thank you.
So, stick to the resolution. It calls for 10 new signs and four signs to be moved to new locations, and a plethora of other things, it's just like.
Suggestions.
Yeah, yeah, but you would, you know.
Which one in particular are you talking?
I just added up the different signs, the whole approach, you know, 10 new signs. I mean, you do need to have sightlines into the intersection, so you can see pedestrians and scooters and everything that might be going through, you don't want to clutter it up. So, you know, I think that you need to fine tune this thing, just, what is the, you know, it needs to be weighted, can't be the right word, you know, what is the most important thing that you want to do, and say, the four different approaches, I believe there's four. So, instead of like throwing up on it, you know, say, this is the priority here, and this is the second most priority there, you know, and make some choices, because this was just rebuilt in 2012, and DDOT doesn't just come and do stuff every few years, they do stuff every 50 years. 18th Street was redone, that's, that's the life of a roadway.
So, your points noted about the structure of the resolution, not the content as much. Zach, you have a question?
Sure, I just wanted to thank Jayber, I'm, I'm one of many residents who has asked you all to speak to DDOT about this intersection. I go through it every day, once or twice a day on my commute, and I am regularly facing all of these things that you observed. I think that, you know, one of the things we discuss often in this committee is that we're making suggestions, I appreciate you being called suggestions, the folks at DDOT are the transportation experts, so they're not going to necessarily put in a bunch of new signs if they're blocking traffic, that's what, you know, that's, and they're professional road design expertise, you know, they know how to design the road. I think Jayber's list is very useful with the, here's all the problems we've seen, as a layman, here's what I might recommend, but, you know, this is just things that need to be addressed.
Okay, thank you, thank you Zach, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly, can't thank Commissioner Bowles for bringing this up, and for, I, I think that DDOT has talented, talented engineers that want to do innovative elements, and I like to use your suggestions and not specific ideas, because I think those talented engineers can really help us with this. I just want to remind people that already several people have died on DC streets so far in 2020, and, you know, we don't want that to happen here in our neighborhoods, so anything we can do to make our streets safer, I think is a great thing, and I urge the board to improve this.
Okay, anything else from the public? Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I would associate myself with the comments that were made, but one, the one thing that I, I, one thing I suggested, the night that I joined commissioners who are out there, that I don't see on here, and I don't know whether it was a particular reason you left it off, or just fell between the cracks, because Vernon Street is just one little faucet, but at the end of Vernon Street, we talked about how everybody who gets the end of the street ignores the no left turn sign, so I was suggesting sort of a permanent red, red light facing, you know, facing left in that direction. I don't see it here, but, you know, if there's, if there's an easy way to add it as a suggestion, maybe that would discourage more people from attempting to make that crazy left turn.
Are you saying they have a light that, that is a red, no turn light?
Sort of a permanent, a permanent red arrow.
Well, if it is a light, won't people sit there and wait for it to change?
Why? And they can go, they can go green, but.
I, I get that, but I would doubt that DDOT would allow the use of, you know, the red arrow in the circular cone thing for anything that doesn't ever change.
Yeah, maybe, okay. Some suggestion that denominates improve the no left turn, improve the no left turn, improve the visibility of the no left turn signage, or something, because right now nobody, well, I shouldn't say nobody, most people, there are a lot of people who attempt to swing around here.
And there is a, a sign that shows turn only to the right, correct?
But it doesn't say no left turn.
There's even a bump out.
There is a curve, kind of like directing.
Yeah, yeah.
So, do you want to add that to the, somewhere?
Yeah, you can even, you can even in the, in the category of, in the category of northbound, northbound AC Street traffic, you could even at the end just say, improve the visibility of the no left turn sign on Vernon Street.
Under suggestion, improve, so, I'll propose a friendly, improve the visibility of the no left turn sign on Vernon.
Come here, there's another hand.
Is there somebody else that has a comment? Yes, sir.
So, as soon as on 18th and 4, you want to make a walkover? So, um, as, as you saw 18th and for, you want to make a walk more, so I agree with Commissioner about the block of box. Because even as a driver, I've been getting my hair cut and washed up for the last six years, even, you know, people are looking for parking, so you're bucking to U and Hay Street anyway, so, um, and that's just shows on Vernon, you can't hit the, the left, but maybe we can put some codes, like the, you know, the white traffic con direction. So if you try to make a left, you will hit something, that may be a polite suggestion.
So, uh, just to get the language right, improve the visibility of the no left turn sign on 18th Street from Vernon Street.
I think you just improve, um, the visibility of the no left, um, off of Vernon Street would make the most sense.
Okay, sure. Improve the visibility of the no left turn sign on Vernon Street.
I'm not sure there's a sign.
The, the challenge we have is that you know how the sign is going to stop people from doing the things that they're going to do anyway, and that's true anywhere in the district, but...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure there's a sign.
There's a, there is a sign, yeah.
It's like, it's a right only sign. I'm not sure there's a no left turn.
No, I, I think that there's a no left turn sign as well, yeah, but anyhow. Um, okay.
I have one substantive question for Jayber, and that, that's the addition of a crosswalk across 18th, um, sort of from the, from Florida to the island, basically. Um, in my experience with that intersection, that is like the biggest crunch point of the intersection with a lot of late-turning buses and a whole lot of traffic that's just figuring out what it's going to do. I, I'm real hesitant to encourage pedestrians to walk there if people are so brave or foolish as to do so without any crosswalk there.
Yeah, we saw several people using that as a crossing space. Because otherwise, to get there, you have to go, you have to cross three ways.
Well, presumably...
Your destination is coming up the island, but...
From, from that corner, if, if your destination is somewhere on the far side of 18th North, you could go north to cross. If it's on the, you know, one of these restaurants along the south side of Florida into U, you come south and across. I, I don't understand the need to add, I mean, I, I get that people frequently cut across stuff, but that is such a confusing intersection. I hate the idea of suggesting that pedestrians get into that zone, given what seems to happen with traffic there.
No matter where you are and you want, where you want to go, you only have to do two crosswalks with lights.
What if you're going from Lucky Buns to Cassius Buns?
If you're going from where?
Yeah, if you go from Lucky Buns to the other corner where Karen is, right? You have to go...
Well, you're crossing the...
Well, you come down here in a car.
We're splitting hairs.
Yeah, but, but I, that, that is the area that to me is most likely to create problems with interface between any kind of vehicle and pedestrians, because of the way it's been for a long time, and because of the Vernon connection in there, which, what I see a lot is people coming down Vernon, turning right into the intersection, and then frequently turning left to go out on U Street or Florida.
And if there was a crosswalk there, there wouldn't be really enough room to kind of maneuver that.
Exactly, especially given the funny light structure that happens there.
So yeah, that was just a suggestion. I would feel unwise if I saw nearly a dozen people within the hour that we were there cross and then not make a recommendation for a crosswalk. So that's what that was kind of about. I mean, it's just natural to load traffic. I want, I, I would like to prioritize pedestrian safety over, I mean, I think, yeah, I think that that would help the pedestrian safety matter. I know it might, there, I don't know, this is why we're sending this. D-DOT can hopefully figure it out. But I was just showing, there's a lot of people that make that crossing, and like I said, I would regret not suggesting a crosswalk when I saw numerous people cross it.
How about do something that, that suggests not to cross there as a matter of safety?
Yeah.
Because there are, say, cross...
You know, you could, you have...
Traffic lights everywhere else to get across.
There are some good signs, I know it would be an 11th sign, but there's, there's some good signs, I think, up on Connecticut Avenue. There used to be a crosswalk that was particularly dangerous, and it says pedestrians must use crosswalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the easy way to do it is on that sort of rounded, between Vernon and Florida, is to just put some sort of, you know, bollards or something that have a little sign on them that says, this is not a pedestrian crossing.
The good thing about the intersection is that it's so congested that vehicular traffic moves slowly through. I mean...
Until they, until they try to catch the light.
I think they tried, yeah. Okay, so, uh, let's move to a vote. Um, all those in favor of the resolution?
Because it didn't come out of committee, you do need to have a motion second.
It didn't come out?
It didn't come out with the recommendation, so you, you have to...
It's on the agenda, though.
It's on the agenda, but you need to have a motion for, to pass. The resolution is written with a second, because it didn't come out...
So I move to pass, uh, the resolution as written. Do you have a second?
Aye.
All right. Um, all those in favor of the resolution as written, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any extensions? Thank you, Commissioner Bowles and Commissioner Poole. Um, okay. Moving on to, uh, the resolution to add scooter corrals, um, at the intersections of Columbia, Champlain, and Columbia in Ontario. Commissioner Bowles, this also?
Yeah. Um, okay, so this stemmed from a conversation of making 18th Street more safe, and in the future, we will be having more proposal-like proposals like this, um, that were essentially designed by D-DOT and thought out looking at statistics. So there are, there are a few packets that may be in the back, but, um, commissioners, this packet is what I'll be referencing. Um, the first one is a, or the first picture is a micro mobility trips density. Um, I don't have the timeframe for this or great specific numbers that we have asked for, but it does show essentially where a lot of the pickup drop-off, um, where people start their scooters and where people end their scooters. So when, um, we reference micro mobility trips, um, in this terminology, it's going to be all of the e-scooters. So, um...
Or bicycles, it's, it's any micro mobility, whether it's scooter, cattle, bike share, private bikes, um, it's all small, you know?
Yeah.
All means of transportation.
And so this proposal is to add, um, the scooter corrals, and there are a few of them already throughout the district, and we already have a few of them even in Adams-Morgan. And this proposal is to endorse D-DOT's, um, design, to add four of them on Columbia Road. And the four that they will be adding, I can show a picture of it. The, uh, there will be three installations at the intersection, or proposed three, um, three at the intersection of Champlain in Columbia. And then there's one that's going to be proposed, um, a little bit further east, uh, on Columbia, essentially, or at the crosswalk, essentially, um, next to the Ace Hardware, um, across the street, on the north side of Columbia. Um, the major reasons for, um, these corrals is A to improve sightlines in these highly pedestrian zones, uh, due to illegal parking, uh, which, uh, you have the pamphlet here. Literally every design has a car that is, oh, the first one has a car that is illegally parked. So that's what, um, this would hope to prevent, is instead of there being a vehicle there, there would be, uh, bike racks and scooter corrals. So instead of having the scooters on the sidewalk, they would be in these corrals, and that backs up the micro mobility trip density, which says, you know, there's already a lot of scooters that go here, so let's put them in an organized spot. And at the same time, we're able to make, uh, intersections more visible for not only the drivers to see pedestrians, but also for the walkers themselves. So, uh, the three that are going, um, on Champlain Road and, uh, or Champlain Street and Columbia Road, uh, the first one is on Columbia Road. It is on the south side of Columbia, right before the Champlain intersection, so this is Unity Park. And again, there should be a few that you can pass around. Um, so there would be one there across the street, uh, there is, so there would be one, um, the one that I just discussed is essentially right here. So this is across the street, and it is in front of, um, which building is that?
The Imperial, the apartment building?
Yeah. Yeah. The apartment building there. And then the next one is on the other side, and that one is on Champlain Street, and that is in front of a liquor store there. So all of these spots are already, um, not parking spots. You're not allowed to park there, but as you can tell in the pictures, there's oil stains from vehicles parking there, and there's literally a vehicle of, that's parked there now. So we're not getting rid of any vehicles, uh, any vehicle parking spots, uh, or legal parking spots at the Champlain Street and Columbia Road Park. However, we are getting rid of one parking spot, or the proposal gets rid of one parking spot further up the street, and that is to create, um, more visibility for those using the crosswalk to cross on Columbia. So, um...
Where's that crosswalk?
That one is, um, oh, I have actually, there's another map here that actually shows them. So the three will be here, and then the one will be further out on...
As indicated by the stars.
As indicated by the stars, yeah.
This is 17074B Road?
Um, yes.
Three corrals here, and one here.
So, um, they're... They suggested these to us. They are looking in the bid, so I don't know what, I'm sure Kristen has some ideas on this.
There's always people that, that these corrals could be used by any micro mobility.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's bicycles, it's levers, it's, um, a, a small micro mobility thing, because the, you probably see them around, but they're, they're, uh, they use these white stanchions to, that are drilled into the, into the asphalt, and then there's bike racks that are installed, you know, within that, within that box that's protected by these white stanchions. So, um, you can, you know, you can lock up any micro mobility unit within them. It's not just for scooters. I just want to make sure people understand that.
Can we do a friendly to change the religion here?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, absolutely, I would like that, actually, to reference that. I apologize for not, but yeah, this is definitely, uh, I, and there actually is a need on Columbia Road to have more bike racks, so this would fill that, um, that section of area where there needs to be more bike racks, and there's a need for them. But yeah, definitely where, um, the 1707 Columbia Road, I see numerous bikes that are locked up to the trees or the gates or the whatnot. So, um, this would be a good spot for them to park their bikes, and the same thing for Unity Park. Um, there's numerous bikes, there's going to be a new, uh, a new residence right across the street from these, so I'm sure they'll be able to put their bikes there, or their, um, their visitors will be able to put their bikes there as well, so...
What was the friendly?
Yeah, did you get that?
So in the title, and then in the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, whereas, and the B and further resolved, each instance of scooter changes to...
I think it's MIMO?
Uh, Mimosa.
Yeah.
Micro mobility is the proper term.
I think of Mimosa Station.
Like that would be the Mimosa Corral?
Right, so, or just micro mobility.
Micro mobility.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add an additional benefit of this that I'm not sure if you mentioned is that, you know, one thing that I've heard from a lot of people in my SMD is that there are scooters and other forms of micro mobility that are blocking the sidewalk when they get parked. There's not always a good place to park them, so this, you know, gets them out of the way of pedestrians and, you know, people who need to use the sidewalk, so it provides a space for them.
Okay. Mr. Wexler?
Uh, I second that, and I'd also like to add that I think this is another welcome opportunity to reshape Unity Park, which should be in everybody's interests, just with other types of activity other than what happens there on a daily basis. And, um, I would encourage the, the commission to think about how we can add potentially other similar uses, and maybe align, um, the park itself, not just, you know, the parking spaces, but with, um, you know, wraps of these sorts.
Okay. Uh, Zach?
Um, thank you. I have two sort of strategic questions. Um, one, I know that this commission has had a long history of not understanding why D-DOT makes decisions and just being told we're going to put something somewhere. Um, and I, you know, I agree with you that that's the correct thing to do. My question is sort of, uh, if I'm looking at the reddest of the heat map, it is not in the locations where these scooter corrals are. And so the users of these micro mobility, who are dropping them in the 2300 block of 18th Street or at, um, Florida Avenue and 18th Street, why are they going to decide instead to park their micro mobility a block and a half away when they could just simply leave them on the sidewalk in that space? Um, point two, uh, is I really appreciate the way, Commissioner Bowles, you presented this as both taking spaces that are not legal parking spaces and taking spaces that require visibility, and thanks to illegal parking, often there is not visibility for those of us walking across the street. Strategically, I don't understand why we don't ask for each crosswalk in intersection on Columbia Road to have similar mechanisms. I mean, I live on Columbia Road, not within this particular zone, but further down where we also need bike racks, and we are also, there's a crosswalk in front of my house that has one of those wheels pedestrian signs knocked over, destroyed. Uh, so I don't, I mean, I think anything that we can do to encourage better sightlines across the entire ANC, I don't know why just these three locations are on the dot.
Yeah, so I can answer to that. Um, so if you are able to reference the Adams-Morgan Plain map, um, there should be a sum on the table as well. Um, it does actually correlate quite nicely to, um, the hotspot, except for, um, the BDC Plaza. Um, so the thought process on this is, uh, we, there is something in the, um, something in the pipes for 18th Street, so we would like to do something entirely comprehensive, uh, whereas these spots we could approve now, um, and there's no, like, additional, um, we, we could get these installed relatively quicker, whereas these additional spots still, um, they haven't been settled on necessarily. So, um, I think that, that's the reason why. In addition to your answer of sidewalks, um, I would definitely love to have every sidewalk within Reed Cook, uh, at least Reed Cook, and hopefully all of Adams-Morgan have, like, bump out and curb extensions. Would love to do that. Uh, it just seems like a daunting task. Um, I, to me, I think that there should be one already, so could we just pass a resolution to get them at every, you know, intersection? I completely agree, uh, not necessarily like scooter or micro mobility corrals, but, I mean, we see them just to the south of us, we see them just to the east of us, why aren't they in Adams-Morgan? Um, to that, maybe we can sponsor a resolution asking D-DOT to finally put sidewalk barriers at intersections and crosswalks. Uh, I just, my concern is that I, honestly, what I just went through with this 18th Street intersection, having to identify every single one, and then it be litigious with a resident who doesn't want to have more, so that, honestly, that's the reason. And there's neighborhoods that do have them. So...
Okay. Uh, Mr. James?
Thank you. So, one of the things that kind of irritates me about this is this is just, this is not chosen by the community at all, it's just D-DOT identifying.
Yeah, it uses data.
But, why, actually, Zach made a good point about that. Um, that data page, she said it was, well, it doesn't say who it's from. I thought it was done by the bid, is that, that's not true? Says right at the top.
No, it's, uh, I think it references the bid area. No, it's, uh, I think it references the bid area.
Boundaries.
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't say that, but anyway. So, you know, I was pleased to see, uh, for this one, this is the Unity Park one where there's a male truck. I was pleased to see recently that they put a flashing light in the middle of the street and expanded the, uh, like a raised concrete, meaty kind of thing.
Yeah, with the hot stuff.
But, you know, and that's because it's obviously somewhat dangerous to cross it.
Yeah.
So if you're going to introduce at two locations there, a bunch of people zooming in on bikes, scooters, whatever other devices there are, you know, that is not good for pedestrians.
Yeah.
To be at conflict with all these devices, which some people do not drive, you know, very responsibly, to be very honest.
Yeah, that's very unfortunate. Um, but I definitely, there is data to show that a lot of these types of structures actually are common measures. Um, and I would be happy to point those out to you. But I think that's the perspective that D-Dot is also pointing out, that if you have these things in the road, and I think this also pulls back to the bike share conversation I had previously, or last year, was that it actually does increase, um, or it decreases speed because there is, um, something different in the road. Um, so I am going to follow the data here. And they seem to show where the pickup drop offs are and, yeah.
I've got some more points I'd like to make. So on this one, um, I don't think you need to take away a real car park someplace when right in front, there's a cross, right on the other side of the crosswalk, there's a cross patched thing, which I don't know what it is. But that's where the corral should go there.
So that one is more specific to point out of sightlines. Um, Dennis, that, that is a, I would, you would like to, um, cross that sidewalk without, with having a vehicle parked there. And sometimes legally, there's another vehicle that's parked there. I think this is to
This photograph doesn't show that. It just shows a small car park within the, within the zone.
Right, the issue is, so when a car
I was just saying, put the corral here instead of there. You, why not do, you know, a good turn for both communities?
I was going to try to explain why, if I could. So when a car is driving down, so driving on that same side of the road, down Columbia Road, and there's a car parked right before the crosswalk, if a pedestrian enters the crosswalk, the car that is driving cannot see the pedestrian because the car who's parked there is blocking. So it's called daylighting the intersection to push back the, um, the parking spaces so that the car has a wider view site. So they're not hitting pedestrians in the crosswalk.
I understand that concept, okay. So in this case, if you put a bike corral there and scooters can zoom out and they will be unseen by approaching cars either.
They'll be in the bike lane, which will be free from cars, hopefully.
And hopefully protected.
And be able to merge right into the bike lane.
Okay, were there any other questions? Yes, sir.
Um, I was just, I, I strongly noticed this, I think it's a great idea. I, I think that we should have more corrals like this all over the neighborhood. And I, I also support asking D-Dot for more bullouts around crosswalks. This is a great one, uh, the first, first street northwest. Sorry, I'll show this to commissioners later. But this is a beautiful one that has purple paint around.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's super pleasant to walk through.
Yeah.
It's good for all, a lot safer than having this intersection turn up a car, so.
And it's purple and cool.
It's purple.
And it's an easy to implement pull button.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, doesn't require a lot of work.
Just maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
Don't bother.
Kristen?
Um, Dennis, I think that, um, area in front of 1707 Columbia Road that's parked, I think that's the building entrance. So, um, I think it's marked, you know, real park near building entrance.
Hmm.
That's, that's also water prohibited.
You got a question?
Um, I'm just wondering if there's, or if any of these general provisions around motorcycles or larger scooters, like scooters like Vespas types, parking in those areas. Um, I know oftentimes those can block, you know, take up one or two entire bike racks. So, um, I'm just wondering if there would be specific provisions around that.
No, no, all being accommodated.
Yeah, I, that, yeah. And I think the, my thought process on it is that hopefully there's enough where we can put the Vespas too. Um, I'd rather have dozens of Vespas than two vehicles and they take up the same spot.
So apart from, you know, these four coming from D-Dot and not from the community, Jaeger just said something about others are being discussed apparently by D-Dot for 18th Street and maybe other parts of Columbia Road. Wouldn't it be wise to do this planfully and like really see what the possibilities are instead of doing, well, let's grab four now here? And then, you know, it could, it might turn out that it's not necessary to do some of these, but it's much better to plan how you would do all of them.
That's good plan for 18th Street is to be more comprehensive and holistic in planning.
Right, but why would you apply that throughout the neighborhood?
I think that for two reasons. A, I think there's obviously a need. And A, I'm looking at the trip data and the trip density. And B, there's a safety need. I mean, I, the one in the, the Champlain Columbia intersection, my boyfriend walks across every single day. It's in my single member district. Um, I have the largest employer within Adams Morgan, has their employers, their employees walk across that nearly every single day. There's an impetus to have pedestrian safety. We got voted to do that. This is what we're doing, this is the community process.
Far from proven that it's going to create pedestrian safety. I think it puts pedestrians at risk. The scooter riders, you know, are, I would say reckless in general. Fifty percent
Okay, Mr. James, your point is taken about you thinking that the micro mobility corrals will put pedestrians at risk. Uh, moving on to the next question.
So when you put a corral in place, is there follow up? There's a corral in front of Harris Teeter that was not used properly for the longest time?
Stairwell.
Really? Yeah, exactly. Um, but, so who follows up on that? And then to that point, let's say that corral was then not being used properly or the neighborhood found that we'd rather have a parking space or whatever the neighborhood found. Who would be able to change that? Would D-Dot, does D-Dot have a plan to look at it once a year? Once every six months? Is there, what is, what is the D-Dot extended plan for their corrals?
Yeah, the plan of the corrals, I can't say, but, you know, the first thing that came to my mind when you said if somebody's using it illegally, uh, why can't you request, you know, ticketing of
I'm not worried about the illegal usage. What I'm saying is, is that a sort of plan off of Mr. James's point. What I'm saying is, is that if, then if the corral is, if we have four corrals on Columbia Road and a year from now, zero people are using them, then should they just be not corralling anymore?
I don't think anything that D-Dot does is permanent. I mean, it can change.
Right, and so what it's, oh, sure, but then what I'm saying is that does D-Dot follow through on their corrals? Or once the AMC puts it in or whatever, then who follows through on them? If in six months or a year, everybody's like, these are useless, would you be able to then make a resolution saying now they can go back to parking? I'm just wondering.
I think, uh,
I think corrals are great. I'm just saying, what, what's the, you know?
It's an evolving thing. I mean, just our last resolution that we discussed for like however long we did it, um, that was at 18th and Florida. A lot of money and time was spent planning out that intersection. And then it's an evolving neighborhood and you kind of respond to what happens. I think it would be similar here. Uh, so, yeah, I think we'll see how it goes, right?
Yeah, I think, I think the commission could probably request, I mean, I think they definitely could request.
Well, and I think that it may help inform decisions going forward on 18th. To see these in place and see how they're used would be helpful in evaluating how well they'll work on 18th, seems to me.
Yeah, definitely. And 18th is especially like the sightlines. And I think that's what we'll really use as a trial in Columbia, to see if it actually does work.
Okay. How did this come out of committee?
Um, just got sent to the agenda without a recommendation.
So, okay.
So we need a motion, second?
Need a motion to add this to
No, no, no.
No?
Not to add, just a motion, a motion to pass, the resolution is written.
Okay. So I'd like to move to pass this, resolution is written.
With the friendly?
With the friendly amendments, the micro mobility thing. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. So I'd like to move to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution as written with the friendly amendments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any against, any abstentions? Six to zero, okay. Uh, and the final agenda item, um, is a request by the Rock and Roll Marathon for approval of their route for 2020. Doesn't seem like, oh, there, there you go.
Yeah. She's hiding that thing.
Welcome to the tent.
Wasn't happening, really. Did you guys got the, no, they didn't, I had brought some additional ones.
I don't have a handout.
No.
We can pass it, see?
My name is Diane Thomas. I'm an event rock and roll organizer in the city. I've been with the group for 12 years, so I've been in front of guys for 12 years. Some commissioners, new faces, old faces, but I'm happy to be back every year. Um, the event this year is Saturday, March 28th. Always has been a Saturday. Um, it is same course as previous years through this ANC. And packing you guys, runners come out of the park at about six on Calvert. And then they pick, they cross Connecticut and come down Adams Mill Road, pick up Columbia Road, go down Columbia, then pick up Harvard, and they're out of here at 16th Street. Timeline is about a five hour closure. The full marathon has about 5,000 runners. Starts at 7:00 AM down at 14th and Constitution. And you'll see those first runners about 7:30, they're moving pretty fast. The half marathon has about 15,000. And those start at 8:30, same start line. So, so the bulk of the runners will come in later on, the more, probably about nine, which we'll see then. And then we usually add it there by about 11:45. The, the closure is noon, but we usually add it there. Last year we added it before noon with clean at the end. So I know you guys who are familiar with it have seen it. Um, it's a pretty thick batch of runners coming through there this time. And so there's no street crossings, of course, because of the density of the running veil. Um, there is also, MPD is instituting again the clean street, meaning no cars on those roads. Um, I don't know how you guys were impacted last year. That's MPD's initiative, not us as event organizers. But it's a safety measure and they do it across the city. It's 26.2 miles entirely in Washington DC. So the entire course is required to be clean. Uh, I know there have been cars on the course that were not moved. Some are moved by D-Dot, some are left as long as they, and MPD does their sweep with, you know, the dogs and the, under the car. So I know that's always been a concern this ANC because of the density of cars on your streets. So I didn't hear a lot of complaints last year or previous years with that street, unless you guys know something I don't know. But I know that they, we did that last year and a couple of years before that as well.
Well, my understanding is up until last year, they never required the cars to move. And last year, I thought I was very clear that we do not have the capacity in this neighborhood to rehouse all those aisles.
I think you guys put this in your letter last year as well.
My real concern is that the notices go up and they say you have to have your car off the course.
Yeah.
Now, my understanding from a fellow commissioner who actually ran the race is that those cars were lined up all along the race course in Adams Morgan with, you know, the, the crime scene tape.
It could have been because of your, you know, the language you put in your letter last year.
Well, I believe it was along the whole course that there were places that were residential that had cars parked.
We ran into this with D-Dot's parking. I'm thinking about Reed Cook Neighborhood Association, which threw a wonderful block party that gave notice. It's not MPD's priority to move the cars, so the cars stay. So I don't think Rock, I'm running this race for the sixth time this year. I'm very excited, flying back from Minnesota for it this year. Um, and I don't, I think what they're doing is following what they're told to do by MPD. It's up to MPD to enforce that and to remove the cars. And if they don't do that, the same way they didn't do it for the Reed Cook Neighborhood Association block party. I don't, I don't know what we do about it.
Yeah.
I know it pisses people off and like it's frustrating, but I don't know what we do about it.
Well, and what's particularly frustrating to me is that the people who are really inconvenienced by it are the people who are conscientious. The people who say, you know, eh, I'm not going to bother, have, have no impact at all because they just tape out the cars and but there was also someone who wrote into one of those bloggy things. What, uh, Popville maybe? About having had their car towed when they were down. You know, it was after midnight, but they were headed home at one o'clock or something and the car got towed. And I asked for information through the mayor's office and of course got no information about how many cars actually got towed. But it, it's a real problem. It's a problem both for the businesses who wind up having people who don't want to come to Adams Morgan the night before because they have to pay attention and get out of here before midnight. And the people who are conscientious wind up having to drive around and around and around, trying to find someplace at an appropriate time. It, it's, it's just really frustrating. And it's frustrating that they can't somehow be made to understand that their perfect scenario is not going to happen when you go through residential neighborhoods, it's just not.
I have a question for you. I know some neighborhoods and business improvement districts like lean into this. Um, what do they do for like any marketing opportunities? Or like, hey, this is Reed Cook Neighborhood, take this, whatever. What other neighborhoods and businesses do?
Some have, like North Cap is something, North Cap's Main Street does something. I know you worked with Adams Morgan Main Street, um, before as well. Um, always welcome, we have a huge expo that all the runners come to. And all the visitors that come to this are looking for places to go and things to do. So we welcome any information at the expo. We have a huge information desk if people are looking for restaurants and places to hang out and view the race.
Yeah, well, the thought process is like, I mean, it's, the reason why it's through the entire district is because it's to highlight the district, right?
Yes, correct, absolutely. Maybe not H Street, I mean, you work with the H Street, CC as well.
Yeah, we passed out water and oranges one year from either SunTrust Plaza or BB and T Bank Plaza, I forget that. Um, and that was years ago.
I would argue, I mean, we talked about this at the PBT meeting, but the course that, the part of the course that goes around Adams Morgan is one of the most exciting parts of it and it's packed with people. I would find it hard to believe that businesses don't benefit. I mean, I understand that parking is a, is maybe a drawback, but that businesses don't benefit from all the people who kind of collect in that area and there's people drinking and handing stuff out and it's, you know.
Cool.
Well, I'll look into North Cap.
What's the date again? I know it's usually March 28th, March 28th, 28th, 28th.
Yeah, I'll look into North Cap and see what they do. But it seems like a good opportunity to utilize people who are already coming to our neighborhood to come back. Just got a lot of great restaurants.
Welcome to include any information you guys have about two neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
Pack a bit of things and put it in the bag.
Sweet, yeah, that's great.
And I'm put in contact on race day. If there are any problems, concerns, hey, cars are getting towed, what's going on? I'm in a command bus, so I'm a simple phone call.
But you can't stop in front of me.
You can at least bring alerts, you have MPDs with me, you know, D-Dots with me. So I mean, they can be alerted to what's going on if they're being towed or people are trying to get in a car during the race. I mean, just any issue that you see coming up. I may not be able to help a car that's getting towed away prior to the street closure, but
Mr. Roth, you have a question?
Right.
I'll, I'll, I'll take 60 seconds to make my annual speech on this issue, which is having personally, almost had a situation where I was unable to get out of the neighborhood because I was surprised by waking up one morning and finding out that I couldn't get out of the neighborhood out of bounds, right? It would be one thing if all these people were being inconvenienced by a charitable organization running the race for charitable purposes. This is a private for-profit enterprise. The profits are going to China. So at the very least, they're going to put all these people to this problem and to this inconvenience and they're going to get their cars towed. Make the private for-profit enterprise pay the cost of getting their cars out of hot. If we can't get MPV to change its stupid ass rules, make the profit-making enterprise pay to get the cars out of hot.
When they tow them, I believe they just tow them around the corner. They don't tow them to, and it's not a lot.
But there is no over the corner at such a time.
They don't believe their fee will find for those two.
They do get ticketed, but they don't, you know.
No, whatever. All right, make them, make them, make them, set up a website where somebody can send in the check, the reimbursement, the fee, copy the ticket and get reimbursed for it.
I'll also
Don't just give, don't just give them carte blanche to say, yes, our agency loves you and welcome to the neighborhood.
Yes.
How do you get the profits out of China?
They do, yes.
I know, right? Yeah. Yeah. I was going to go...
There's actually a big charitable movement of the race as well.
But I mean, the, 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 the race is owned by China and the United States of America.
What's the other...
And there's a charity in Hong Kong? There was one reason to buy it, too.
I'll do that.
City Cross and those.
Look into. Do this.
No, I just, I didn't know that.
It'd be hard to find a race that's not...
Sponsored by China.
It's not the urgent needs of society. It's not, we're not carrying a TV here. It's a for-profit enterprise.
And just a note on the, just getting stuck in the neighborhood, we are using Waze, and not everybody has Waze, but it's great. In Google Maps, they program all the street closures, so hopefully that will help if you need to get out on March 28th between hours of seven and noon, but that's a resource if you can back your way around.
Thank you very much. I love really going south and literally going north.
You'll be fine, you'll be fine, if you live south of the races.
You were in Rock Creek Park, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, like, if one of those of us who live here wanted to try to escape through Rock Creek Park, would you need to do that? You just get your way through.
Yeah, but you have to get across to, to get there.
How did you live south of Calvert Street? I mean, you couldn't put it, just live south of Columbia Road, you're screwed.
More discussion from the public about Rock and Roll Marathon, about our letter of support. Hearing none, anything from commissioners? Commissioner Poodle?
I was already running out of him this year.
I'm sorry? You look cool.
Or you're running in again.
Okay.
I'm going to work with the neighborhood association, see if we can do something out this year, but next year, I'll be, so...
My cell phone's in my email.
Okay, will be in your radar.
I, I would make a motion to send a letter to, it's D-Dot that...
It's actually HSEMA, Homeland Security Task Force for Special Events.
Homeland Security Pass, Task Force.
HSGA. Homeland Security.
Homeland Security.
H, Homeland Security. Security, EMA, HSEMA, Special Events Task Force.
And there's a particular person there?
Tanya Mitchell is the chair of that task force. T-A-N-Y-A Mitchell.
And I would move that we send a letter to HSEMA, approving of the Rock and Roll Marathon for 2020, but again, expressing our concern about the requirement that all vehicles be removed from the roadway, that there are simply too many, within Adams-Morgan, there are too many vehicles that will be parked along this route, and there are insufficient parking spaces off of the route to take care of the large volume of cars through there. And that they should acknowledge that and change their rules to allow people to leave their car parked there during the race.
So, I wonder if they're going to move the scooters out of the scooter corrals.
I'm guessing the scooter corrals won't actually be installed by them, but that's just a guess.
Okay, I second.
Wait, can I have any motions? Third second?
Yeah. Okay, so, we have that on the agenda. All those in favor of the letter of support as described by Commissioner Guthrie, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Six, zero.
And I have one final item, it actually goes back and relates to the settlement agreement with Los Cuates. I would like to move that we authorize and approve a stipulated license to allow them to begin doing the things that are authorized in the settlement agreement during the potential protest period when they put in the application. We've done this before with ones that have come with a stipulated license. There's a, you know, 45-day protest period after the application, but they wouldn't be able to do this otherwise.
There's no need to make them wait, so...
Wait, who was this?
Los Cuates.
Los Cuates, the settlement agreement, and it can be included in the same letter.
It was the third item on the ABC agenda.
Still need a second for that motion.
Second. And is that now on, that was moving to put it on the agenda?
Well, it's to, it's to add to the item that was previously added to the agenda.
Right, okay.
So, it's, it's part of the Los Cuates, I just forgot to ask for it then.
So, then, but we still need...
We still need to vote on it.
So, all those in favor of the stipulated license for Los Cuates, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Six, zero for the stipulated license. Okay.
And you just have to make sure you prepare.
Yeah. All right, Doug have a motion to adjourn?
I'm okay to adjourn.
Oh, man.
Well, if we don't adjourn, will Bridget be able to leave us? If we do it, send aye, will she have to stay here? I think that's a reasonable thing to ask.
Doctor in the room.